I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business. Reading and approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting dated September 12th.
How long did we approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Give a motion second to approve of the minutes of the September 12th meeting. Is presented all in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign that motion carries. Thank you. Next, award of bids for milling and paving of Woodline Avenue from Second Street to Clark Street. Sherry or Cody?
The two bids for the paving of Woodline were reviewed. Both bids met all specs and were submitted by the companies. The city has used both of these companies before. The bid for AAA paving was eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and it was the lowest of the two bids. And that's my recommendation that we accept AAA's offer.
Okay, we'll take that in the form of a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Only discussion there is that happens to be the block of Woodline that I reside on. And when the matter of paving Woodline first came up a year or so ago, I said, Milton paved every block on Woodline but mine. I don't want anybody saying, well, the mayor's getting his street paved, but it looks like the other sections of Woodline have been taken care of. So I'll have to relent and accept that pavement. So anyhow.
I think your neighbors are deserving.
Well, and that's why my neighbor said that. I told him.
My mom.
Bob and Sarah Morton said, well, that's fine, but what about us? You know, so anyhow, you're right.
That's correct.
Good point. We have a motion second to approve the bid as presented by Cody. All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign that motion carries. Thank you. Next, we give an ordinance approving the annexation of trail property. Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir. Mayor, tonight will be the first reading of this ordinance. This is an ordinance that Corey Lilly has worked with me on, and I don't believe Corey could be here this evening. But if anyone wants to view where this property is located, I'm sure next week Corey will be glad to take you on a hike out in the Piney Creek Reserve. I'll read this ordinance by title, and this is an ordinance that basically is annexing to the city of Beckley, property upon which is going to be a trail that's going to run through the Piney Creek Preserve. It is contiguous, part of it is contiguous to the city of Beckley limits. And so this ordinance is titled An Ordnance Annexing to the City of Beckley, six hundred and thirteen point twenty-four acres, more or less, located in the Piney Creek Preserve adjacent to the city of Beckley in town district Raleigh County, West Virginia. Now, if this passes tonight, we will have second reading in two weeks, at which time we will have a public hearing. And as I stated, if anyone wants to view where this property is located, I'll make arrangements with Corey and welcome to join Corey for a hike through the woods. And Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
Very good. Well, believe it or not, I have a hike with Corey on this piece of property next Wednesday, I think. So if anybody would like to join us. Again, I can't say enough about Corey's efforts to work with the West Virginia Land Trust to make this happen. It's an excellent addition to the trail system. This particular piece of property has at least three waterfalls on it, which are magnificent. So I would recommend if everybody's in agreement to pass this ordinance on the first reading to move it along. And we'll go from there.
Do you have the time for that hike?
I think it's going to be around, it's going to be in the morning, probably around eleven o'clock. And as a matter of fact, Gary Morfield was in yesterday.
Okay.
And like, if you talk to Gary, he wanted to do the same thing. If he's willing to do that at that time, we'll just combine that.
Okay, I'll speak to Gary tomorrow.
Yeah, but he mentioned the fact that he and you had planned to do that. So we have a motion to approve this ordinance as presented by Mr. Fowler on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second to approve the ordinance on the first reading. All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign. So that ordinance passes on the first reading. We'll move to a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Sure.
I see it's six hundred and thirteen point twenty-four acres, so how long is that hike?
It's not that long.
It's three hours, two.
Did you become a G?
No. You know, this is the, it's previously mined property, the entire plot that the land trust has managed. But the part we're going to be looking at is at this end of it.
Okay.
Shortly off of the parking lot as you go down to the old entrance to Woodrow Wilson.
Yeah.
The city's done a nice job of putting a parking lot in there. So anyhow.
Yeah, there's some kiosks there already built, and there's a fence that's been erected by Jeremiah Johnson's son, Cam, for like a, I think it's an Eagle Scout project.
Eagle Scout project, yeah.
And that area right there, there's these two waterfalls, and they want to put like a little park or trailhead right there in the parking lot. So you're not going the other, you know, to visit the other six hundred acres, I don't think.
Exactly. I'm not, for sure. Anyhow, we have a motion second. I don't think we've taken a vote on this yet. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion second.
Motion made.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the ordinance as presented by Mr. Fowler and set for a public hearing at the next meeting. All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, we have the infamous, notorious, well-known resolution regarding open burning that is also referred to for many years as the Fowler, the Fowler Resolution. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'll do this evening, since we have done this every six months for a number of years, I'll just read the three or four paragraphs that actually are most pertinent to this resolution. And what this does is this sets a period of time in which residents of Beckley can have open burning of vegetation. Paragraph one reads, "The open burning of vegetation will be allowed in the corporate limits of the city of Beckley between the hours of five P M. and seven A M. from the first day of October until the thirty-first day of December, 2023. Prior to the open burning of vegetation, the owner of the property upon which burning will take place must notify the city of Beckley Fire Department. The open burning shall be in such a manner as to not affect the health, safety, comfort, and property of any person. If the open burning is determined to not meet this criteria, then the fire department is authorized to order the open burning to cease. And any prior resolutions of common council contrary to the terms contained herein are hereby revoked and declared null and void." Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Any questions of Mr. Fowler on this resolution? If not, I would appreciate a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the open burning resolution as presented by Mr. Fowler. All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, we have a scheduled presentation by New River Transit Authority by Heather and Erica. And the, many, many years ago, when I was on city council and New River Transit Authority, maybe known under a different name at the time, came into being, but it was a transportation service in Raleigh and Fayette County, which has been very successful and has since been, thank you, taken over under the auspices of Raleigh County Community Action. Many years ago, we approved an annual membership fee, for lack of a better word, thirty-five thousand dollars. And this probably goes back almost forty years. So it's our membership investment in New River Transit, even in light of a number of new buses, a number of new employees now in affiliation with, at the center in the, in the.
Beckley Intermodal.
Beckley Intermodal Gateway, a relationship with Greyhound. And I will say, many of you know, you've been involved in economic development. If you're involved in economic development, you have a prospect, probably the first four questions are by a prospective investor in a project in our areas. Number one, is the site, is it ready to break ground on? Is it site ready? And then next is for people to bring their families in, what's the housing situation like? The third is, is childcare available? And then I think fourth or close to fourth is, do you have public transportation? Not only for our employees, but for those who will avail themselves of the services that this project will entail going forward. So I can't say enough about the importance of New River Transit and the great job they do. And I will say too, and Heather will probably cover this, but over the years, there was a local match income stream coming into the transit authority called toll credits, and it's been very helpful over the years. It's been a significant amount of money and due primarily to the Roads to Progress, which is obviously a very successful program that the governor initiated several years ago. And you don't have to drive far just out of Beckley to see the amount of construction and repaving, et cetera, that's taking place. And it has been deemed by the powers that be that those toll credits and the revenue that they produce for certain projects be applied to the Roads to Progress program. So that's good for the Road to Progress program, but it's tough on New River Transit. So that's my little introduction. So Heather, if you'd like to take over?
I think you took over. I don't have any, that's all. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But he did cover a lot. So my name's Heather Lilly. I am the Assistant Director for New River Transit. Erica's with us. She's the Mobility Coordinator, one of our newest positions that we've started. So he kind of gave the history. Transportation's been around for nearly forty years, but it was ran with Raleigh County Community Action Association up until 2015. In 2015, our area, along with a small strip of Fayette County, became urbanized, which is over fifty thousand people in the community. So that's when New River Transit had to be established because now we're a federal entity that receives direct funding from the Federal Transit Administration. So that is our primary federal fund, and that's how we get the federal dollars. But for every federal dollar, we have to have a local dollar to pull down the operating. So local money is hard to come by, and as the mayor had described, toll credits was a huge help to us. We received it every year from the time that we were established, but then they quit during COVID. So during COVID, we didn't get all worked up about it because COVID money. But we went back and asked the state if we could touch this toll credit topic again. And they said, as long as the current administration was in place, that public transportation would not receive toll credits any longer, but it's going to highway projects only. So now we have to come up with, what are we going to do to be able to continue to get local funding? So as the mayor had mentioned, we haven't requested to increase this fee in over forty, nearly forty years, and we're hoping to double it. The current fee's thirty-eight-five, and we would like to have seventy-seven. But of course, any additional would be greatly, greatly appreciated. In 2021, April of 2021, we expanded our routes. So we did have three routes that ran from eight-thirty to four P M. And April of 2021, we expanded to where we have five routes now. We cross over into a couple of different areas that we weren't touching, and we're open at seven A M. until eight P M. now. So the service has expanded almost double. Our ridership can show in the packet. I have provided for you guys. There's graphs. The first graph shows the ridership increase, and the last one is just as of now. So we still have four more months. It looks like we will probably go over our 2022 ridership. We gave you the pamphlet that has the old routes and what we did, and then the booklet is what we have expanded to now. We also have a program that is near and dear to my heart. It's called the SOR Program. It is partnered with D H H R, and it stands for State Opioid Response. So this allows anyone in recovery of any need whatsoever, it doesn't have to be opioid any longer, they can call any transit system in the state of West Virginia and request transportation, and we will give it to them free of charge. We just have to bill everything to D H H R. So that is one of our local sources, and as you can see in the second graph, that has gotten huge. Like, we've doubled already this year. It's a great need. It started out as a pilot program in 2019, and just October of last year, it became official that as long as the needs there, D H H R will continue this program, which thankfully, because I would hate to turn away the ones that use us daily and depend on us. So there's another. And then in the last chart, we cover the operating expenses, and you can see that they're gradually going up. Of course, COVID put hardship on everyone, and so the drivers also got a salary after COVID increase, which was much needed. But the fuel has went up a dollar since 2020, over a dollar a gallon. And the worst is our buses. In 2019, we ordered two buses, and they were seventy-seven thousand apiece. It has went up nearly sixty percent. Our last vehicle was a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Well.
And also, we put some pictures in there, and they're beautiful, beautiful buses, but they're very expensive as well. We continue to evolve with our technology, and we try to keep up with all the other big urbans. And our newest technology that we're getting ready to do is a live bus tracker. So the community can put where they're located, where they want to go, and this will tell them exactly what routes to take and where to go. So we're growing, but we need the local support to continue. But can I answer any questions? Does anybody have anything?
I think if you only come back every forty years for an increase.
Yeah?
We can handle that, I would think.
I'll do it.
Mr. Trump, you've heard the request. Is this something you feel would be doable under our general fund?
Well, we're already committed to the thirty-eight-five, and so we would be looking at just an increase of thirty-eight-five. I think that, in light of some of the other things, I think that's not really a significant increase when you look at the fact that we'll pull down federal dollars. So for every extra dollar council may choose to commit, we'll get a dollar, another dollar in return. So I think it's well within our ability to do that, whatever the pleasure of council is.
Well, it's a great service, and I can't say enough about the efficiency that you all practice and the new route alignment of the past two or three years, very noticeable throughout the city. I've had relatives over the year who, over the years, who have really counted on the transportation system. And again, I think it's integral to what we're trying to accomplish as, not only as Beckley, but Raleigh County, as we attract folks who are looking for well-rounded services. So. Any comments or questions from council?
I was wondering, since the bus goes all the way to Fayetteville, Oak Hill, Mount Hope, is the Fett County, those towns helping also with this?
Yes, sir. Yes, and you guys are the first ones that have put me on a schedule, but I plan to go speak with everyone. But yes, we have Fayette County, Raleigh County. We do Oak Hill, Mount Hope, Fayetteville, and Sophia. So there's, there's different ones, of course, that can afford different amounts, but I am going to request to speak with everyone as I'm doing with you guys this evening.
Thank you.
And also too, that New River Transit is very open to suggestions for specific routes. We've had meetings with those interested in at least a one or two day trip down Bed Off Mountain to the Prince Railroad Station, where that's been a problem over the years. I had a newspaper editor, a freelance editor, two years ago, who cashed in on a train ticket, and the train ticket cost him sixty dollars to get to Beckley, and the cab fare was like a hundred and thirteen dollars from Prince back up to Beckley. So he said, what's wrong with this picture? So anyhow, you know, we've had those meetings, and I think going forward, that's something that we'll need to, again, talk about. I know that for special events, for different community projects, you all have major buses available with other than normal hours, so.
Right. Community actions, Transportation Director is who coordinates the special things here and there. But we also have demand response service where as long as people call in ahead of time to get theirself on the schedule, we'll do anything within Raleigh County. So we have a lot of people that will schedule grocery shopping, you know, and call us. And every Wednesday, we pick them up and take them to the grocery store. So that's the other service that we offer besides the five transit routes.
And all your drivers are so personal and so helpful.
Yes, and some of them's been around for thirty years. We have, I think, once twenty-three years, and the director was actually the Transportation Director with Raleigh County Community Action. And he kept and tried to create this contract with Community Action so that the drivers who've been doing it for decades didn't lose their position. So we have a great partnership with them.
Right.
Yeah, they're great.
Very good. Any other questions of Heather? Nothing. Mr. Fowler, I think because this is an agenda item, we could entertain a motion to accept this increase or provide this increase?
Mayor, I would really recommend we do this at the next meeting if we could.
Okay.
I think that would eliminate any question as to whether or not we gave proper notice.
Okay, very good. Susan, will you make sure this is on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, thank you guys for your time.
Have a good job. Thank you. Okay, anything for any member of council under old business?
Mayor, one item, if I may.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to pass out a shopping cart handout that I wanted to run through with some folks. We received a good number of documents detailing specifically with respect to LaRue, the folks that are driving over the limits and a whole bunch of folks are driving under the limits. As the mayor's aware and the council's aware, LaRue's a twenty-five mile an hour zone, but a lot of people use it as a cut through, and a lot of folks go through there too quickly according to the logs that I'm looking at dating as far back as May, and these are at random times. It does appear that later in the day, folks are exceeding that twenty-five mile an hour, but it's strange. It's not at this, these records don't reflect this pervasive speeding scenario, although I've had numerous LaRue folks kind of reach out and, Mayor, I know that all of council recall, the petition is presented with fifty-five signatures on it for folks in the surrounding area that are concerned about the speeding. So that being said, what I'm passing out is what might be a good middle ground. And I've researched a little further and talked to folks in fire, the concern being obviously whenever they're bringing their vehicles through and they necessitate, and law enforcement as well, and they necessitate a faster speed, that what I'm handing out might cause damage. We've researched this a little bit further and found forty percent recycled material, what is a standard speed hump, not a bump. And this hump would allow folks that are going as fast as up to twenty miles an hour not to sustain damage to their vehicle, obviously, but it's only a two-inch hump. What I like about this product, and folks from Public Works kind of turned me on to this company and this product, is that with a ratcheting wrench, a person can take it up and put it down in ten minutes after it's installed. So if we were talking about removing something like this during the winter months when scrapers came through, the company that I'm passing us out, they tout the fact that these don't really cause difficulty with scrapers. And I talked to some Public Works folks, and there's really one person, maybe two if he's sick, that run that route on LaRue when they are scraping, so it would be something they'd be aware of. But with respect to the sign that I passed out, I talked to Downtown Beckley Business Association. They would be willing to fund the speed hump if Public Works would be willing to install it. The hump, not the bump, is more expensive, obviously. It's nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There are two separate signs that would go on either side of the speed hump, which would total eighty-one dollars and seventy cents to give motorists the awareness that they need to drive the speed limit. But again, it would, it would slow folks down to around the twenty mile an hour. Regretfully, right where, for instance, Ms. West lives, is right before you enter into a turn. And that turn, folks really need to be mindful, you can't make that turn twenty-five mile an hour. You just shouldn't and can't. But at any rate, this sort of would also give folks heading up LaRue toward uptown the awareness there, if they're not familiar with the area, they're getting ready to come upon a sharp turn. I know we had discussed de minimis items being something we can pass without needing notice, and we've accepted donations from other nonprofits and individuals. I would like for us to accept the Downtown Beckley Business Association's charitable gift of this speed hump for purposes of addressing this, and if we find it does no good, obviously, we can go with a socket set and remove it at some later time. But if it does benefit the fifty-five folks that filled out that petition and signed it, I could see some value there. So I mean, I would move for this donation to be accepted and for us to allow Public Works to install the two signs as well as the speed hump, and let's give this a quarter at least, maybe three or four months. We have some time until we're scraping anyway, so that we can see if this maybe adds some benefit to the folks who live on LaRue. I know there's been some concerns about Hall Street. We haven't had an opportunity to do the type of work our officers have done on LaRue because Ms. West has brought this to our attention now for some time. But I would make a motion that we accept this donation of the materials for the speed hump, and hopefully, we can get that installed as soon as that material can come in and be donated to Public Works to install.
My suggestion, I defer to Mr. Fowler on this. I think it falls in the same category because this is not an agenda item, and it does have to do with not only the disbursement of some city funds along with contributions, but also I would prefer a consultation with Public Works and with the Chief of Police.
Mayor, are we able to inquire of them now? The only reason I say that is just because.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not on the agenda, sir, and it does involve acceptance and disbursement of funds. As Mr. Fowler said, on the previous issue with New River Transit.
Sure.
Let's have a chance to discuss it with department heads, and we'll get it on the next agenda.
The mayor, I'm certain if council doesn't agree with me, they won't second it, but I would move, make a motion.
Mr. Fowler, will you?
I do want to speak up. I do believe that this does need to be an agenda item. Mr. Dunlap, an order for council to act on it.
Well, Mayor, Mr. Fowler, the only reason I would be surprised by that was because two meetings ago, we discussed a de minimis for which wouldn't require that treatment. So I'm, I would have thought that accepting a gift for a thousand dollars and letting Public Works install a speed hump would be even far more de minimis than what we discussed last time.
Well, this is obligating the city to have its personnel do something that this council has not discussed up to date. I think it's a matter just to be on the safe side, Mr. Dunlap. I think it should be on the agenda.
I understand. I see the distinction. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Yes, sir.
Anything else under old business?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask Mr. Trump about the playground equipment on Barper. Are we going to be able to put that up this year, or do you think maybe next year?
As a matter of fact, we were looking at the commitment for some of our final ARCA funds, and both the installation of both those playgrounds were items that we were looking at. And hopefully, we can move on that very soon.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, we haven't forgotten. It's just.
I know, I know. You've had a lot on your plate here lately.
But I think we have. But I, but I think we have, it falls within the, the guidelines for dispersment of the ARPA funds. And we're right at the end. We've probably allocated most of it, but we still have enough to, I think, do both playgrounds, one in your ward and one in Kevin's ward, I believe.
Okay. And I just wanted to say this too. I wanted to thank Angela King for the consultants that she hired for Hunter Cemetery. I think we just about got that squared away of where that will be on the nomination.
That's great.
The nomination will be completed for, to put it on the National Register of Historic Places.
Wonderful. And on the topic of neighborhood parks, I spend a certain amount of time daily going to different wards and reviewing some of the things we've, and this council's been able to accomplish along with Angela and CDBG. But from Simpkins to Scott Avenue to certainly East Park, Temple Street, we have some magnificent, safe parks that we can be very proud of. And there are others. And I'm sure Barber Avenue will fall into that same category. So it was long overdue, but it's, it makes us all proud. Proud of council for your cooperation in getting this done.
Mayor, I have an item.
All right.
Do we have an update on Stifler Drive?
Yeah. We had a meeting with the Stifler folks and reached an agreement where we will, we will pave the existing, and a lot of it depends on the, we talked about the availability of asphalt previously and some of the things we want to do. But yeah, we, we're moving along well there. And stormwater people have that on their list to take care of too. So what was it? Two weeks ago, we had a meeting with Stifler folks with Jody and.
I think it was after the last council meeting.
Yeah. So yeah, we're moving, moving along well. And I won't say we're bending the rules a little bit, but we're, we're showing those folks that we appreciate them as citizens of, of the city. Anything else under old business?
I have one.
Yeah.
And it's old. If you go down to Canal Street and you go by the side of Black Knight, there was some historic markers that were dedicated the other day that Merrill Cole and all of the Historical Society and half a dozen other people were involved with. And if they're beautiful and if you want to know the history of Black Knight and.
Colonel Chilson.
Colonel Chilson and that whole area right there, you can read it on those signs. And it's a nice little pull off area there. So you can just go over there and take your time and read it.
Along those lines, along those lines, and Tom, I think you'll agree with this. We'd had some rain the night before and that one little car passage through that lot was pretty muddy. So maybe, and I, I think we own that property, don't we, Billy?
I believe so.
Adjacent to the fence.
The gas company has a facility there.
Right.
I think there's a kind of joint ownership on some of that.
If we run across some spare asphalt at some point, it might be nice to, to fill in that little passage that runs parallel to the fence at Black Knight, right in front of these markers that Tom referred to. It's a nice, nice pull off area. Anything else from any member of council under old business? Under new business, let me just say that on the 28th, the day after tomorrow, I guess, we will have a very important, in my opinion, workshop that will include invited speakers on the City Manager Form of Government, those with experience with that form of government, including our former city attorney and former Western Indian Tax Commissioner Mark Matovich, former city manager for the city of Kill, Bill Hannabas, Jenna Belcher, who's worked with city managers in her Ford County region and beyond, and perhaps Mr. Rich from the, an engineer with.
Thrasher.
With, yeah, Thrasher, who also works with a number of city managers throughout the state. So I, I do know that Councilman Bob indicated even before this meeting was scheduled that he was going to be out of town and not available for the workshop. But I hope that everybody else will be able to make a five o'clock workshop. I've heard from Sherry. She plans to be here. So if you can do it, I think it would be very informative and an opportunity to, have any questions answered that you may have regarding the, that form of government.
Mayor, if I may, and I guess this is really a question for Mr. Mr. Fowler, is the, is the workshop necessary? I think if we were to take an informal poll, we're already in. I don't, I, there's not a single council member that's against it. And this has been workshop, as the mayor said last time, a couple councils before us were really behind it. I mean, if we all take an informal poll and agree today, I don't want to disinvite anyone to a meeting, but I'm certainly have other things I'd like to do with their days. And if this council's already in, why don't we bypass our meeting and just let you draft the ordinance and go with God?
Well, God's never let me down. And I've never had a doubt about God. But now and then, even this astute council, you know, may have doubts about it. And I think this is an opportunity to cement the feelings about the City Manager Form of Government. I, I don't want to leave any stones unturned or make it appear that this mayor railroaded city council into doing something without uncovering all the stones and all the questions. And then we have, these people are true authorities. Your comment's well taken, but from my standpoint, I would prefer to stick with, with the workshop at five o'clock on the 28th. Next, we've conferred with the Raleigh County Commission. And Halloween this year will be held on the traditional Halloween date of 10:31 August 31. And the hours, just like Raleigh County, will be five to seven PM. So mark your calendar for that. Sad to say, I may be out of town. I may be in California. So if I have any excess candy, I may ask somebody to give that out for me.
Have you heard from Jill if we're doing a tailgate, Halloween tailgate like we've done in the past?
You know, I think, and I don't know if, and this is just me speaking, and Billy may have a better feel for it.
I think they've, since there are so many other entities doing tailgate Halloween, I think, talking with Leslie and Jill and formally, I don't think they're going to pursue it. They haven't done it for the last, well, they didn't do it during COVID and that just sort of, they never picked it up after that. So as of right now, probably not.
A lot of other organizations and churches have, have taken that on. Anything else from any member of council on the new business? Okay, we're down to public comments. And it looks like we have four people signed up, beginning with Mary West. Three minutes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want you all to spend some time doing something for LaRue. But anybody that's playing such a joke, look at this. That happened with me dodging a car on LaRue Avenue, something I've been asking about, even me. And even turned around and skid the left, right side of my body. So I want you all to do something, please. Now, if $900 is what's holding you, I'd give you the $900 to put that big bump, uh, but it's not a bump, put that hump. And I'm gonna bump for you when you put it out of there because I need it done. I cannot stand to fall and break nothing else. A child get hit down there, be laying on the side of the road. I sit on the side of the road for a good 10 minutes with people trying to help me get up. Traffic's still going around with me to stop. Two ladies tried here. The only one car to stop was Coach Fox there. He's lefting too, but he got out and helped get me up off the side of the road. Somebody's gonna get killed down there on LaRue. Now, I don't know how many humps you're talking about putting in, but I hope one hump don't make them mad enough to go over the hump and then speed up and hit somebody. But I tell you something, it needs to be done. And it needs to be done right away. Because I am looking into other things, legal ways to handle this because I can't keep falling. You know, it's coming fall time, but that don't mean I got to fall. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, Teresa Dennison? Three minutes, please, ma'am.
Hi. I haven't ever addressed you guys. I appreciate you letting me. I'm not, I don't live in the city or anything. But you know, I like to open everything in prayer. If y'all don't mind, I'm going to use a little bit of my time to do that, please. Lord, I just ask that you be with me as I try to speak from my heart. Lord, I ask that you be with every person here and all of their families as they do the best they can to serve our city and the people that live in the whole area. We're very thankful for your guidance and direction in all these things, Lord. It's in your name we pray. Amen. So I live out on Maple Fork, so I'm not in the city limits. But I, about a year or so ago, was, my daughter moved over near the VA and I was driving down some back road, like, and I was like, I've never been down that road. And I went down Meadows Court over by Park. And this little almost dead kitten came out. And then it's kind of like that video you see where they all, you're like, oh, a little kitten. And then just they all start pouring out from everywhere. So, you know, we took that one to the hospital, to the vet and, you know, 160 some dollars later and found a home for it and everything. But then I ended up getting hooked up with Debbie Miller over here, which y'all probably all know her because I've kind of been her cohort in this last year. And we just trap cats and we catch kittens and we spay and neuter them. And many times it's on her dime. You know, we beg for money and just try to catch as many as we can and tame them. Like I've had 20, 20 some at my house at a time in my basement. I'm a dog person, so if that tells you anything, I'm committed. But, and I know that y'all have done so much with, you know, I've tried to research a little bit with the Raleigh County Commission and how y'all are matching with the, the city, y'all, y'all match the commission. And so, and then, you know, I followed a little bit with the Delaney Wykel drama or whatever that is. I don't know if y'all can like do anything to get that moving. But right now, when we catch them, we can take them to Charleston. Each human can take two. So sometimes I'll throw my mom in the car and make her ride up with me. And then I can take, we can take four that way. And they're $20 each if they're strays and ferals to Charleston. And, you know, I've pitched everything I can to get people to jump in. Like, I'm like, if they, they all want us to come and get their cats and do something. But then many times people can't help us with the funding.
15 seconds, ma'am.
Oh, man, that went fast. Okay, Lord. Well, anyway, so if y'all like want to hire us, there's a video, there's a Cobb County, Georgia has a, they have a trapper. You should hire Debbie if you have that position and funding to make that happen. But she just traps cats and, you know, we'll catch them all.
Very good.
Right now, we're just like running back and forth to Charleston on our own dime. And, you know, it's a.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll, we'll get them off your street. Like, I'll even name it after you and I'll haul it to Charleston.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Debbie, did you want to make comments?
And they're not spraying and they're not fighting.
Do you want to make comments, Debbie? Hand your time's up. Thank you, Debbie.
That is great.
Debbie, did you want to make comments?
Please, have her.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I want to give you a little background. I volunteered with the Raleigh County Humane Society for about 10 years. And last spring, decided that I needed to separate myself and start a little something different because our philosophies weren't matching at the time. So through trapping, as Teresa said, spaying and neutering, vaccinating, getting necessary medical treatment for these kitties that we've been picking up, to date, we have collectively adopted or sent 275 cats and kittens from Raleigh County, either to rescue or adoption. And the number I'm most proud of is we have spayed or neutered 242 felines. This puts a small dent in the overpopulation of cats in our neighborhoods. I have used my retirement savings. My friends have donated. I have done fundraising, but I don't have a 501(c)(3) and I don't have any grand money in my budget right now. I have exhausted my personal savings getting this done. Last October, I promised it a year, I officially launched as Leila's Hope Cat Rescue. That's named after my little kitty that I rescued on Woodlawn Avenue. And she is now 12 years old. She was a little feral thing, but I named it after her. As we all know, expenses during the pandemic and afterwards have skyrocketed. And this leaves many of our furry little friends neglected and homeless and hungry. And without spay and neuter laws in place, we are going to just continue to have this unwanted overpopulation. I don't know if you recall, Michelle Cochran came to speak with you all in June and July. She reached out to me after she met with you. And we went to Woodcrest and trapped and fixed six of hers. We got four, four of them were kittens. Teresa was wonderful to work with them and we got them all tamed and they're, they're in great homes now. So we are able to help people. We go outside of the county. Once in a while, I flip over into Fayette, but I really am trying to focus my efforts on Beckley and on Raleigh County. So I just want to give you a quick little statistic. Two cats that go unfixed in one year, she can have 12 kittens. Okay. I had a four month old kitten that I trapped on Bishop Street over by, off of Springdale that was pregnant. She had a kitten that's six months. The second year, those kitties that have not been fixed will produce another 144.
15 seconds, Deb.
Do the math. Yeah. 1728. So I am just asking, I know that when Michelle met with you, that I believe there might have been some discretionary funding that might be available to help us with our efforts. I'm going to hand out my letter to you if you don't mind. It's not a statistics.
Do you have any questions?
Debbie, I admire what you're doing. I think if you, the fact that you're not a 501(c)(3) doesn't help things particularly. But I think if you will send a request to my attention to the city, if you'll make a specific dollar request, maybe we may be able to help you. I have a, I personally, as mayor, am allowed by Mr. Trump and our CPA controller, Jessica Chandler, to award $250. That's not much money.
Thank you.
But I would, I would be glad to do that. I do it sparingly and I do it, you know, just a few times a year. But if you'll send a letter, I can guarantee that.
Thank you.
And perhaps, you know, perhaps we can do more.
I've been trying to work some with Soaring Hope Animal Rescue Partners. That's the group that, that I believe you with the commission went together to buy the van.
Van, right.
Right. So we've been trying to be, they've worked with me. They allocated $1,000 to me this year just to use off their grant for spay and neuter. So that did help me a lot. But they are willing to run donations through. They are 501(c)(3). So they're, we're talking about me kind of maybe becoming the cat side of Sharp where Sharp is more.
That'd be great.
Dog focused.
Since they have a vehicle in place.
They've already done it. Right, right. I'm not on the insurance yet because I've not driven a tall truck like that. But anyway, any help is appreciated. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
Can I say something, Mayor? I was just gonna tell them, yeah, that would be great if you could get your 501(c)(3) or partner with someone. And I hate to put Danielle Stewart on the spot, but she is great of helping to write grants.
I regret, but I, Soaring Hope is who I work with.
Oh, okay.
Well, and honestly, the reason I'm here applies because I'm so upside down from the last year and a half. We had the worst kitten season of all. We had the worst kitten season of all. I had sixty-seven.
Mayor, the filing, the filing fee for nonprofit recognition is around the amount that the mayor has pledged, so my law firm, or Ms. Stewart, obviously, either of us, I'm sure, would be willing to help you with the nonprofit application through the IRS. The amount that he pledged is, as coincidence would add it, just about the exact amount you need for the filing fee. So I'd be happy to help you if I can.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you very much for the good work you're doing.
Yes.
Tom Mosley.
How are you all doing?
Good. That was down on your street this morning, checking things out, yeah.
Well, I know this has been brought up a few times in the meeting tonight, and I appreciate Councilman Dunlap looking into speed bumps, speed humps. I want to reiterate a little bit on it though. We have not been at this for two years, but we've been battling this for several years. And I've talked with Chief Bailey, he has been great to add patrol cars down the street. And don't get me wrong, that stops you, okay? You're going down there, you hit the brakes, you see a patrol car. But they can't sit there twenty-four seven. As much as we would like them to, they can't. I've done some research myself. There are several companies with speed bumps, under a hundred dollars per speed bump, two or three per street. So three hundred dollars per street in high-traffic areas is not bad. They can be put down with a three-eighths-inch bolt, and as Councilman Dunlap said, picked up very easily. The other thing we're looking at is other control issues. What will stop you? What will make you think when you're coming down that street? So one of the things we want to ask for is a reduction in speed to fifteen miles per hour. It's not a stop, but it makes you think. There's nowhere for those cars to go except in our yard if they're flying. We've had several in there over the past few years, and I really don't want to have one for breakfast uninvited. So if you would look into changing the speed limit and continue to look into pricing on the speed bumps, it would be appreciated. Before someone gets hurt, let's get something done. That's all I ask of you.
Very good.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Chief will talk about that. I don't see any big problem that would have to do with the traffic control map, but I think reducing the speed limit on the hall is actually different than LaRue, in my opinion, as far as the amount of traffic. Anyhow, we'll talk about that, and I think, Bill, Bill Fallon, do you have any comments on that?
No, sir. As you know, to reduce the speed limit on any city street requires an ordinance because you are amending the city maps. So, and I think we need to rely upon the chief, as we have in the past, and his department to make a recommendation to us as to the speed.
Very good. Anything, do we have anybody signed up to speak virtually?
We do have a couple members in attendance in the audience, online, so nobody has...
Okay, I'll read the instructions just in case they're listening in. If you do, if you do prefer to make a public comment, if calling in by phone, dial star three to raise your hand to be recognized. If connected by a computer, click the hand icon on your participants panel. It also acknowledges you to speak if you wish. So do we have anybody with their hand up?
No, sir, not at the moment.
Okay, we have motion to adjourn.
Stand adjourned.
Thanks, one and all.